I'll leave this.
No, I would say.
And there was Andy.
Paul would start. Executive Program Budget.
Okay, I was just making sure recording what's going on. All right, so yeah, tonight we're here to talk about the 2022 Executive Program Budget Budget Workshop. To give you a quick background, departments are providing information in June. As we start to prepare for the budget, they make their requests. The budget team reviews, the budget team this year was myself. Interim Administrator Jessica Wolf, Human Resources Generalist Ashley Voight and the Accountant Monica Stern. We review, go through, and then in September, we meet with the departments to kind of refine based on items we'll get into in the presentation, state limits, things like that. And then we pretty much worked up until October 10th, the day that you got the document was the day we basically finalized it. So there's a lot going on, so. First thing is. We have the Village Mission Statement. So as a managed growth community in the Milwaukee metropolitan area, Grafton strives to deliver the finest municipal services available in the most cost-effective and efficient manner, and in doing so, ensure the highest quality of life for its residents. Defined by quality housing and safe neighborhoods, the provision and maintenance of essential streets and utilities, a broad and stable economic base, exceptional recreational opportunities and attractive commercial and industrial development. Well, there we go. So we also have a few areas of emphasis that we look at. Continue to improve quality of life, improve efficiency and effectiveness of municipal services. Ensure stakeholders are well-informed and engaged on municipal matters. Ensure fiscal stability, ensure adequate infrastructure, facilities and equipment. Promote quality and sustainable economic and community development, and also to promote a quality housing mix for Grafton's residents and Grafton's business workforce. So as we, as we prepare the budget, there's a few items that we have that are village guidelines and state guidelines. So state guidelines, the main one is the tax levy limits. It pretty much limits the tax levy authority to be the net new construction, which last year was 3.73%. So allows us to increase our tax levies by up to 3.73%. The village guidelines that we follow, one is the Expenditure Restrain Program, which is crossed out this year because our tax, equalized tax rate is below $5 per thousand, which means we don't qualify for the program. Last year, we received about $43,000, just to give an idea of what, of what we lost, and I'll get into why that occurred. The other one is tax rate at CPI or lower, not an issue this year, but just for information, the state had the CPI this year at 2.9%. And then we always have a general fund balance target of 25% of expenditures. So tax levy limits, again, quick, state law restricts the percentage increase of the village's tax levy to 3.73%. And the executive 2026 budget increases tax levy by 3.73%. Here we kind of talk about the assessed tax rate, where it goes, history. So you can see we're pretty stable, 22 to 24, 25, the increase is related to the fire referendum, which equated out to 99 cents of that dollar. And then the reason for the drop in 2026 is due to the village-wide reassessment that we're currently going under. The board review for information is Wednesday, so we'll have more information after that. But we did get a estimated assessed valuation from the assessor that we're comfortable with using. Fund balance, the goal of the village is to maintain fund balance at or above 25% of expenditures as a financially responsible safety net for unanticipated expenditures. And also it's consistent with Moody's Credit Services Recommendation for the Village. The 2026 budgeted fund balance represents 40% of the 2026 budgeted expenditures. And I'm going to use this time to kind of, again, quick review of fund balance. Fund balance is not cash, that always seems to be what people think it is. It's your assets less your liabilities, so that includes things like payables, receivables, so it's not 100% cash. Good way to think about it is a rainy day fund or emergency reserves. So a 25% policy theoretically would indicate that we would, if we receive no revenues, we would have roughly three months of expenditures. And then a best practice for fund balances, and we've talked about this in the past, but use it for one-time expenditures that do not increase recurring operating costs that cannot be funded through current revenue. So for example, you would never add staff with the revenue source being fund balance. That would not be sustainable. And then a good use for it would be, for example, if we're going to start up a new program, that would be a good use to get that program underway. I'm going to kind of show you the history. Blue is our targeted fund balance, which is 25%. The gray is our actual and projected, so we can see we're consistently above the 25%. And I should note that that 3, 3,358 million is after applying the fund balance that we have in the budget. So I just wanted to give you a historical because it has been the practice of the village to apply fund balance to, to the budget. And you can see our actual, so while this year is fairly high. Oh, thank you, I didn't see that. Is fairly high, you can see that over the last 11 years, actually 12 years, we've budgeted to use 8.7 million. In actuality, over that same time period, we've gained 1.5 million. Now, that's not to say that we should ignore the fact that we're applying 1.3 million. We should take a look at that as we move forward, but again, historically, due to open positions, we're very conservative on permit revenue. For example, right now, we don't, do not have anything related to Aurora in here. And that could in itself bring in about 100, 125,000 dollars of permit revenue. Because we're not 100% positive, there will be, I guess I did pull the permit, didn't I? Have to follow up with inspections on that, but we had that discussion a couple of weeks ago. And you know, so for example, if we identified 1.2 million dollars and we ended up using $600,000 of fund balance and next year's budget, we identified 1.2 million dollars, we would be having a much more serious conversation about fund balance. But based on history, I feel I'm comfortable with where we're at right now. Plus there, we'll get to a little bit later, there are probably some adjustments that could be made to that use of fund balance depending on other factors that are out there. And we'll cover that when we get to those funds. So again, a synopsis of, we can't see the top here, can I just exit out?
Nope.
Admit. Oh, admit. All right, that's why, okay. Oops, I want to go back, how do you go back, previous, all right. So this is a, somebody, okay. This is a overview of the 26 budget facts, basically we put into two things, but it focuses on where we're allocating tax levy. And it compares the 25 to 26, so you can see general fund is reducing. And as you go down, you can kind of see where additional funds are being requested. And again, when we go over those funds, I can explain more as to why that increased. And then just as a comparison, what the expenditures throughout the other, the same funds are. Some are up, some are down. One thing I'd like to note, which I should note at the beginning, is when we, departments came back and they pretty much kept all their budgets pretty vanilla. They didn't ask for anything significantly, an increase, and they didn't ask for any, any new positions for the general fund. And again, general fund is public works, police, village hall, parks and rec.
So all, it's all stayed flat, um, flat to.
Yeah, 1.5%, which would increase the, which would include like the 3% wage adjustment that the village board approved and other items. So again, probably most important piece or as important, how does this equate out to a tax levy? So again, 3.73% is the maximum allowed by state law, which we are recommending. Our total non-TID property tax base went up about 48%. Pretty significant due to the revaluation, which in turn drops our tax, assessed tax rate by $2.10 per thousand. And I'll get into a, a later slide, how that equates out for the average home. But again, the state law is for the expenditure restraint program is if your equalized tax rate is below $5 per thousand, or in our case, 4.776, we do not qualify for the ERP program. When it goes above that level, then we can be back in that program. And this, to show us bar chart over history of where things are going and where things have been. So the blue is general fund, which you can see has pretty much remained flat. The red is special revenue, the main piece of that would be the fire department. Debt service, yellow, that has maintained relatively flat, a small piece. And then the capital improvement fund has been a little bit less, and we'll talk about that when I get to the capital projects fund. All right, so general fund budget changes. So as I mentioned, there are no personnel changes to the 2026 general fund budget. Included is a 3% wage adjustment as approved by the trustees as a result of the compensation study. We are permitting, or we are budgeting conservatively permit revenue and interest earnings. But we do that every year, better to have more, more revenue than not come in where we are kind of going high. So way to look at this budget is it's a worst case scenario budget. And it includes all the obligatory contractual increases, you know, the increase of the garbage recycling contracts, soft, uh, various departmental software licenses, the website hosting, things like that. And then also in the general fund, we are including some one-time projects, which would include the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, a floodplain review project and maintenance projects for village hall. And to kind of recap and show where our general fund revenues come from. Obviously taxes is the main piece. And you throw in intergovernmental revenue, roughly 70% of all our general fund revenue comes from taxes or state aid. Fund balance, again, a little bit higher than normal, but almost all the other ones are pretty much the same percentage as where we budget them historically. Right, next. Wasn't working, so that, there we go. And again, this compares last year to this year in our groupings, our revenue grouping. So again, pretty consistent, as you see, biggest piece, and it's it would, decreases would be in taxes, everything else pretty much stays the same. Charges for services is going down mainly because the village would not, will, will no longer be providing financial support for the fire department, but providing payroll and human resources functions. So be less billed to the fire department. And then obviously, as I mentioned before, increase to the applied use of fund balance. Just stop. All right, fixed it, thank you. And just kind of go over the main general fund revenue changes, comparing the 25 budget to 2026 budget. So there's a decrease of tax levy being applied, about 195,000. Charges for services are going down about 157,000. And in comparison to last year, we're increasing the use of fund balance for, uh, by about 480,000. And again, some of the things that we're applying that fund balance to, as mentioned before, is the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan update, floodplain review and the village hall maintenance projects, which include the ADA door conversion, HVAC updates and landscaping. And then the expenditures, and again, this is general fund, so it's just the general fund operations. And as you can see, 75%, and this is again, historical, is public safety and public works. That is always the main, for most, for all municipalities in Wisconsin, that those are the two biggest pieces of the pie. And to show just a, in a summary, general government is going up a little bit. Actually, we're all, except for public works is going down. But again, the difference why, or why unclassified is so much significantly lower than last year is normally unclassified includes the wage reserve, but since the board has already approved a 3%, we're putting those numbers right into the departments, there is no need to have anything for wage increases in that in that line item. However, we do have I think it was $70,000 for merit in that line. I think it was 75. Just so you know that we did budget for that as well. And then kind of a quick review of the major changes in the general fund, so the wages and benefits, including WRS Social Security Medicare, again, that's for all the general fund operations, is 290,000. We had a bridge repair that was going to occur this year, it's now going to occur next year. But we're pulling that out and we're putting it to, replying that to dam repairs. I'll get into that when we talk capital projects. The more remains program is going down 150,000, again, decreasing wage adjustment reserve, which isn't needed because we're putting funds directly to the departments, so 110. The support for recreation aquatics is, we do have a special revenue fund for those, however, they don't always come out on the positive end, so the general fund always supports them to make them whole at the end of the year. So those two funds close with a fund balance of zero. The village hall updates that I mentioned, the comprehensive, we have a stormwater pipe repair. Mentioned a floodplain review, and then we did add new departments for next year, right now we're recording them somewhere else, but we wanted to point out in the budget that we do have, we do, we are responsible, the village is responsible for some issues at the fire station and as well as the Timothy Wooden Building. So we have about $20,000 in the budget to take care of those issues as they come up. And then as it is every other year, we have four elections compared to two, so there was another $20,000 of elections since there are four elections next year. And then we did add an information technology department again this year. The impact is zero on the budget because we moved money from other departments to that department. But just want to point out that we are trying to, we want to get a better handle on all of our IT costs. The budget for that department is about 125,000. It includes computers, phones. So we're going to run all the expenses through village hall, but the departments are still responsible for their cellphone contracts and all that kind of stuff. But again, as we were going through the budget last year and this year, we were like, how much do we really spend? And felt it was important to pull out because it's 125,000 is pretty significant. All right, then we get into the special revenue funds. So pointing out for the fire protection, we have to show it in our budget because the village, sorry, the OCFD employees technically are employees of the village, since we provide payroll for them and they're paid through with our Wisconsin retirement number, ATF number. So as the board approved, the property tax levy increases about 360,000 as it stands today. And then the main driver of that was wages and benefits increase, which includes three additional. So I did want to point out that it does not existing, it includes the increase from 2022 to 25 positions. Now, the park and open space fund, major change is we added property tax levy of about 93,000 above what we normally do, usually it's 50,000. Five years ago, it was 30,000, so we've been slowly increasing, but there's a very important project that needs to get done, which is the replacement of lime kiln play structure, which came in at 115,000. So decided to provide property tax levy, potentially a one, a one-time infusion into that fund to make sure that project gets done. But I know Chad's working on a replacement schedule and we're doing the best that we can to make sure things get replaced. Now, the park and recreational facilities fund. So a little bit less development, so we're looking at a decrease of 258,000 plus the village has collected 100% of the public works facility, impact fee that we can collect, so we are not collecting for that anymore. And mainly we use most of these for projects. So right now, we have in the budget approximately $1 million for parkland, to purchase parkland in Hawksbridge Landing. The village board earlier this year approved an agreement to buy five point, I think it's 5.1, 5.2 acres. It's, the, the cost has not been identified per acre cost, but the developer will be receiving 50% of the fund balance in this fund annually until we get up to that point of where we pay them 100%. So let's say this, the park comes in at, you know, 100,000 per acre, we own 500,000, but we can only pay 200,000. We would only get 40% of the acreage. But again, the long term is to build this fund back up, probably four years, three, four years, I'm not sure, but when this fund is built back up, then they would, the park would be developed fully. And I think it would, you can correct me, Chad, is it similar to Riverbend Park, something similar to that?
The general concept plan is similar to that, it doesn't include splash pad, but it does include courts, like pickleball courts, basketball, play structure, a small restroom facility with a shelter for you know, three or four, they can also.
We're going to have folks speak from, have department head speak, they really should come up and speak into the, so we can get it for the recording.
Sure.
If you want mine to do that to you, Chad.
The, the plan for that park is kind of similar to Riverbend Park, I will be having pickleball courts, basketball court, play structure. It does not include splash pad amenity at this time. But the, the concept plan does also include a small shelter restroom type area, similar to something that we have at Riverbend Park. It wouldn't be a larger rental type space at this time than that current concept plan. But that is still under review and at the time we developed the park, that would kind of open up comments and public meetings for the residents in that area to also have a say in what they'd like to see in that park as well.
No, I was going to say, similar to that development, we, the Riverbend Park was not developed until this fund had sufficient money to pay for the cost for that park, so we didn't have to borrow. We used these impact fees to pay for park development. Oops. Ah, seven, oh, care of, library funds, so right now, we have an increase of $10,000 to the library fund. A lot of, and then overall, the request from the library was a decrease of about $2,000 compared to last year. But we also don't know the final results of, or the final impact of the town not being part of the, of the library as to we got a projection from the county last year, what our share would be from the county, but we haven't received those final numbers, so we're not really sure. Where we're going to be, we just want to keep the library in a position where they have sufficient funds. That's why the $10,000 increase to property tax levy. And then they have this, they have their library donor fund, which again, was funds they received through a, through will and probate that was given to the library. The library board has a policy of how these, these funds are spent, but we do have it in our budget since it is controlled. Deposited with village, village funds, so only project right now for 2026 is to replace the shelving. And just like you know, budget, fund balance at the end of 2026 is projected to be about 480,000, but they do have a long-term plan and how to utilize that money. And again, this is a great fund to have because it will not cost the village any funds for replacements until this money is used up, and that should help go a long way with getting, getting them to what they want to do. And hopefully paying for a few capital projects down the line. The remaining funds, room tax fund, revolving loan fund, woodland cemetery, recreation, aquatics, environmental have really no material changes. And then just as a reminder, per law, per federal law, all our funds have been fully expended, so those have all been utilized. Debt service fund. So again, the big, the big issues here is we have no tax levy change. We do have about 1.2 million dollars more coming in from TID 4 to pay for the debt service that's scheduled. 300,000 decrease in TID number three debt service. Again, those TIDS, we transfer the exact amount of money to pay for that debt to the debt service fund to pay the debt service. And then we're showing a decrease in the transfer from impact fund. Mainly because the expenditures related to general debt are going down 445,000. We historically have used the impact fee fund and the room tax fund to offset tax levy in this fund to pay for debt service. And again, kind of give an idea, so tax rate's going down, we have, currently, we are using 78% of our statutory debt, which is 5% of our equalized value. I think we have a capacity of roughly 79 million. And then the 2026 budget proposes issuance of debt for road projects, dam repairs and utility infrastructure. So the impact fee, again, decreasing 362,000 mainly due to the fact that we have fully collected the Department of Public Works or the, the impact fees relate to the construction of the multi-services facility, so we only are collecting for the police department. And then correspondingly, the debt service need for, for revenue from this fund is decreasing, decreased by 350,000. Capital projects fund, right now, we have in the, in the fund to 150,000 of general property taxes. Geo debt proceeds of 2.7 million, which would be used to fund street reconstruction and dam repairs that are mandated by the Wisconsin DNR. The road projects, I know Jesse always liked to do this, and I agree, visual sometimes helps. So the road reconstruction, which, which includes utilities and mains, runs from north Cedar Creek down Ninth Avenue to Power, and then over one block to Eighth. And then down Eighth to North, and then back one block east to Ninth, Ninth Avenue. That also includes Overland Court. But not utility, correct?
No, it includes each other.
Oh, it does include utility. All right, capital equipment fund, so the major purchases that we have for next year would be the enterprise lease for, for the squads, which we are now will be fully leased out, so getting into the, into just replacing the lease vehicles. And again, that was done to have a equal amount year after year, instead of going through two, two, one year, three, another year. Excavator, 75,000, that will be split with the utility, the utility also will be expensing 75,000. Police Department HVAC upgrade, 65,000. Street sweeper lease, we're leasing a street sweeper, it's a five-year lease, 61,000. And then village hall HVAC replacement of 25,000. Now, something new we're doing for, for 2026 is again, trying to eliminate peaks and valleys. We sat down, reviewed the five-year CAP and tried, and came up with expense allocation that we're going to be providing to the police department and public works department. So the, the police are going to get 246,500 a year. All right, for next year, public works, 403,500, we're going to continue that into the future. You know, small increases for, for inflation, things like that. But what, what we did then is we offset all the revenues for each department and applied it to that expense allocation. So vehicle equipment sales, grants. And then they can budget up to that amount for the first year, but they could bank funds. So for example, the street sweeper they're releasing, they would prefer to buy one, but when it's 350,000, it's hard to fit into a single year, but they can bank the allocation every year of levy to then save up and purchase that equipment. Both the police and public works were very happy about this concept, so we got buy-in. And then just to kind of show, at the end of next year, if everything goes according to budget, the expenditures come into the same exact dollar that's budgeted. At the end of 2026, the police would have 33,500 that they could apply to future projects. The expenditures come into the same exact dollar that's budgeted. At the end of twenty twenty six, the police would have thirty three and a half thousand dollars that they could apply to future projects, plus whatever was allocated in twenty twenty seven. And then next year, public works is gonna have three hundred eighty three thousand dollars of funds available to make purchases uh in the future. But again, we're trying to eliminate peaks and valleys, uh, which really then puts a strain on the general fund, because that is really. The last piece whether we apply tax levy to, after we look at all the other funds that require tax levy assistance. Uh, as a reminder, we have the TID six Goldberg property um next year. It's bringing in three and a half thousand dollars of TIF increment. Um, it's, because it's the first year and there's been no um. Really development in there. Um, and again, remember that there is a leg from construction to TID capture, so if something is built in twenty twenty five, it wouldn't be assessed until twenty six, which means it doesn't hit. You can't use that increment until twenty twenty seven. So there there's a leg, just just to remember that. In the next year. Um, there is uh potentially an asbestos abatement project, which would be six hundred ninety five thousand dollars. Um, since the TIF doesn't have any funds, we would recommend borrowing for that. Um, but that project, I believe, is currently, and Jessica's not here to provide provide additional information, but um. My understanding was that a study is gonna be done and presented to the board in twenty twenty six, and the board will decide if they want to. Wait for increment, delay that project by a year or two, or if they wanted to uh c- complete. Um, and again, six ninety four um is, I think, worst case scenario.
Paul, um, quick question, the six ninety four, is that for just the asbestos abatement or the interior terrarium?
I believe that's just for the abatement, but I can, I can verify, I'll verify that.
Please.
Yeah.
I think it may have been a little bit more than that.
Okay.
This is seven hundred for the terrarium.
Okay, this is what was requested for the budget, so, okay, but I'll I'll verify. We'll verify. All right, then we also have our proprietary funds, which is our water and wastewater. Um, I guess the way to look at that is for accounting purposes and budgeting purposes, it's, they operate like a business. But uh, we have an increase between water and wastewater. Uh, next year, we're anticipating about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars of additional revenue. And again, as you remember, we increased uh wastewater uh back in June, and then it's going to increase by six percent. It's also going to increase June of twenty twenty six by six percent. Um, and then we have the water revenues that increase um. In December, December twentieth um by forty six percent, something like that, forty six, forty eight percent. Um, so we're ob- obviously budgeting for that. Combined, water wastewater, they're actually. Uh, decreasing expenditures by two hundred eleven thousand dollars. Um, and then also combine. Uh, the village board as developments, uh, usually residential residential um developments occur, um, will accept. The capital infrastructure, water remains who remains. Uh, and again, that's just brought into net asset, um, but. Twenty five, twenty six compared to twenty five, we anticipate about six hundred three thousand dollars less of contrib- contributions. And then the uh main projects for the proprietary fund, we have the main replacement, about three point two million dollars. Ninth abnormal lift station upgrades, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. On the south clarifier, two hundred seventy five thousand dollars, A M I meter conversion, uh, two hundred and. Sixty thousand, I did take a look. Um, currently, right now, in the budget is about four point eight million dollars of capital projects. The new um rates include roughly three and a quarter million dollars of cash flow for capital projects. So there will be some projects that we would uh borrow for. Uh, one of them is the ninth avenue lift station, which is actually on the village board agenda to do a preliminary. Resolution for potential borrowing. Um, but so there are, there are more projects, um, truck replacement, trailer replacement. We just didn't put it on there because it's dollar wise, it's not as significant as these projects. And again, the A M I meter conversion is an ongoing conversion to um, the A M I meters are smart meters. Where they can read um from the desk, they don't have to go in the field and do manual reads. So how does this all work for a tax bills? So again, as mentioned, the average, per the assessor, the average assessed value of property uh is four hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Um, just as a comparison, last year it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So again, that revaluation really did increase. Um, the evaluation of properties across the village. So what that would equate out to with the current tax rate is two thousand seventy dollars. Uh, for the village portion for a four hundred nineteen thousand dollar home, and underneath is kind of the breakout between. Um, the various funds that rely on tax levy support that would be allocated out. And then we have some outstanding items. Um, just so everybody knows, the board review is gonna be uh the October twenty third, today is October twentieth, so. Um, right now, there, I believe, are four hearings. Hopefully, any changes are not significant enough to change this, but. For the uh public hearing, I do anticipate updating that valuation amount. The impact, um, I think on the tax rate will be very minimal. I'd be surprised it was even a penny. But just again, just wanna let you know that we, you know, technically can't do tax bills until board review closes and all that, so that's still outstanding. Um, final funding of the O C F D is not finalized. Um, per the contract or per the agreement is December first. I think everybody kind of knows what's going on with that, um, but we're not sure what final numbers would be coming across, and so that could change. Um, and then the next steps here would be public hearing and and November third, we do have formal budget adoption on here because that is what's on the calendar. Again, however, if we don't have an understanding of the fire department's tax levy requirements, we could be approving the budget as late as December first. Uh, state requirement is. Tax bills have to be be mailed by the third Monday in December. That would give us two weeks. It could probably be done. Uh, we do contract out, but just beware, the contractor also does tax bills for four counties and it's first come, first served. Um, but again, just wanna let you know what outstanding items are out there, what might change. Obviously, if that changes, we would come through with some recommendations. Um, it's just, if the O C F D tax levy amount was lower, we would recommend moving that over back to the general fund and reduce that use of fund balance. Um, and then there are one or two uh pieces from the state that aren't finalized, but they did give us estimates, and generally, the estimate is the same as what's final, but that might change. But I don't anticipate that changing. Um, but we will have a few changes already for, potentially for the public hearing. I'd recommend potentially maybe moving that back, but we've already posted it to the paper. Um, again, it's it's the really, the piece that is really kind of hanging is the O C F D. And then in summary, um, the twenty twenty six executive budget supports village operations, submitting its infrastructure and maintain services. So um, open it up for, yes, send it back to Dan.
Very good. Thank you, Paul, for the hard work, and thank you to the staff for um submitting this budget to us. Um, what I would like to do is open this up to questions on what I would suggest we do here is. If we can, you know, kind of get three questions per trustee, and then uh we'll go to the next trustee, and then we'll come back for all the questions are answered on the list that we can. Um, so um, anybody here to start with that? Oh, here, questions on the budgets, general impressions on the budget. Kevin, you wanna take a shot at it?
Uh, yeah, I can start. Um, in general, I think this is a very good way that we're doing our budget, making sure that. Um, you know, we're paid, we're basing it off this new assess tax amount. Um, I. I don't have anything at this time, though, uh, in terms of questions.
Pretty good. Thank you, Ken.
First and foremost, thank you for taking the time to put this together. I know that this takes a lot of work. We're very appreciative of all the work that you guys put in for this. Uh, I guess my question would be um in regards to the fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Our goal is to maintain the fund balance at or above twenty five percent of expenditures. Currently, it looks like the twenty twenty six budgeted fund balance represents around roughly forty percent. Um, there's a little wiggle room in there for that. Um.
I would just say, potentially, but again, it's, you wanna use it for specific purposes. You don't wanna use it to, um, for example, if we were gonna add. A police officer, public works, you know, we, it would be hard to. Um, move forward without knowing how that could be replaced in future years, so kind of would depend on, I think, what the expenditure was.
Sure. So I think that that is something that the uh board could have a discussion regarding, because there are some things that we need to pay for that, depending on what it is. That might be an option for us to consider. That's all I have at this time.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank all the departments for the hard work they did and uh to maintain a responsible budget here. Um, and for your hard work too, Paul. Um, thank you for that. I I have one question that has to do with the Goldberg foundry. I mean, you had mentioned was a possible, is that additional seven hundred thousand, so a total for about one point four million for asbestos abatement and uh teardown?
I'd have to, I'd have to look into the town. It's ninety four.
When I look at the. Oh. When I look at the detail, the Goldberg asbestos abatement is six eighty five. And then there's another nine thousand dollars for a security fence, so that's how we get to the six hundred ninety four thousand.
So it does not include um teardown?
No, the teardown, is that, and was that estimated approximately at seven hundred thousand?
I I I believe it did include the teardown because um Jessica had me add that security fencing in. Um, because it was not included, so she was worried about, um, you know, that we would have this huge hole. Um, once they did the teardown and they did all the um, the the improvement or the. Abatement, that we needed a security fence around there to make sure that no one got hurt exploring the hole kind of thing.
Okay, thanks, Monica. Um, I will confirm and send an email out um to the trustees, let you know that that does, if it does include. The whole whole costs, or if there is an additional cost, I will let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Uh, a couple of questions here. Um, first of all, uh, again, I think the fund balance came up twenty five versus forty percent. Paul, are you comfortable with that forty percent uh use of fund balances for operations?
I I am, just based historically, um, where where we're at, um, again, it's it's a kind of a worst case scenario. We generally do have additional permit revenue, interest revenue usually comes in higher, and there's usually a gap in when someone leaves an employment. Um, generally, most departments will spend the non personnel. Um, so comfortable with that with that forty percent uh at moving forward.
Okay, thank you. The second question, I see that we have the lease or the street sweeper in. Um, did did we also include the jet truck in there? Because I know we leased the jet truck. That's in there too. Thank you. I appreciate that. And our final question here, at least this round, is, as I understand it, so when a vehicle is sold within public works or in the police department. Does, do they, that department, get to keep that fund from that?
Moving forward, next year, we are going to apply any sales directly to that department and keep the rolling number for them, so they know what they what what they have. So in the past, it was combined. But moving forward in twenty twenty six, they will get a hundred percent credit for their, the sale of their vehicles to the correct department.
Thank you.
And answering your question about the jet jet truck, that's the utility.
Presentation, um, very pleased with the budget. I think um departments did a great job leveraging, you know, outside sources like grants and other revenues. To help offset their costs. Um, and as Paul indicated, they're maintaining their prior year level budget amounts, and if possible, they haven't added any staff, so thank you for that. Great job forecasting and estimating how much revenue. Um, I had a question on the foundry that was answered. Um, just a minor question on the Timothy Wooden Building, are the utilities paid by the tenants?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Uh, again, I echo everyone's hard work to keep a reasonable budget for the residents of the village of Grafton. Um. Paul, you answered a couple of my questions that I had written down for different things. Uh, and and looking at the budget, as far as the uh O C F D is concerned, what's programmed into our budget is what. What are programmed into this draft budget is exactly what we would be doing if everyone approved everything, correct?
Correct.
So the difference would be in the event that someone doesn't approve it, and then there's a fallback number that we fall back to.
Correct.
So then, um, would would other departments or other things be um. Reallocated, or would we be sticking with what we kind of have, and then, but as you said, fund balance mitigation?
Yeah, I would recommend fund balance mitigation since that one point three, two million dollars is is a fairly high number, but again, based on a historical chart, comfortable with that at this point.
Okay, and um as far as the uh I T, moving everything into an I T column or an I T budget. Um, is the plan for the future to have, as opposed to using a contracted service, eventually moving to our own. I T administrator, if you will, if you wanna call it that?
Well, currently, that would be, be assured with Ashley. Um. Basically, what we do is we triage, we take a look at it, oh, we need a printer, we can take care of that, certain things we can take care of. If we can't, then we contract that out. We have a, someone uh on on retainer. Um, that will c- come in and and take care of things. Obviously nowadays, every, most things can be done remotely. Um, but I think uh I do, we do have a number in here. We want to know exactly what we. Roughly pay a contractor every year. I can't find it. I think it's roughly ten to fifteen thousand dollars that we spend on the contractor every year.
Okay.
And then we're also, we also track our times, so we know better how much time we both spend on I T related issues.
It's eleven thousand.
Oh, eleven thousand? Thanks, Monica.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all questions.
Lisa?
Um, yes, I'd like to thank all of the village people who have worked on this budget. Uh, we're under very difficult times right now, so everybody, it looks like everybody worked together very well and got this done, Paul. A special thanks to you. Um, and nice job in the presentation.
Thanks.
Um, I wanted to ask, how, in your time here, how high is the fund balance ever been? Is is forty percent the highest?
Uh, we've been up to forty three percent. Um. You you can, there was one year where we, uh, well, last year we gained one point two million dollars, but um, there's been years where it's it's been higher. So I I could, if you want more information, I can pull that together for the public hearing. Okay.
Remembered, I didn't remember that it had ever been that high when I was.
Yeah, we, um, there were two years that we budgeted for like one point three, one point four million in a row. Um, and then we, I think, ended up pretty much breaking even over those two years. Again, it's, we're, you know, um, I think part of that is conservative on the revenue side. And then again, usually on the expenditure side, um, it could be a year where we don't have a lot of snow. We've had one or two of those years where we budgeted a hundred thousand for snow, and we spend, you know, half of that. You know, it starts to add up, fifty thousand here, fifty thousand there.
Yeah, so that one allows to to utilize some of that money for other things um coming up and forty percent. Um, but I also wanted to ask, I mean, my big concern is, is the fire department, like Andy spoke about, and the amount of money that, you know, we have. Uh, that they have asked us for, and we agreed as a board. Um, and it does look like it's a lot of money. You know, we have the staff costs that are so high that it looks like it's twenty percent increase from from twenty twenty five. The overall increase, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and I I do worry about the contract that we have and what's gonna happen if the town in the end doesn't agree. And I know we have a formula that everybody, you know, has to pay their fair share. Um, that's, that's my big concern. And I fear that it looks so high that we are going to owe the fire department so much money, because. Um, I don't know that the uh budget for the fire department was really figured out correctly in the beginning. So I know that um they used, I think, low end wages to start with to to figure out that budget, and those people on the fire department, I think. Are not at the starting, starting wages. So that's my real concern. Um, I think the the overall budget looks great. I like the fact that you've separated the wooden building and the fire department building, um, although they each, I think, only have ten thousand dollars.
It's it's kind of seed money to start, because we're not really sure what is gonna be needed. But we wanted to make sure that it was identified and that everybody was aware. But we want to make sure that it was identified and that everybody was aware that we are, we are supporting or we are maintaining to the best that we can.
Okay.
Those buildings.
So that's all they have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, again, thank you for all the work you've done on this, Paul. We really appreciate it. Um. I think that, uh, we're all concerned about the fire department. Chief, I think, uh, would you. Get the village board here behind you in doing what we can for the fire department, and I think that, um, communication is ongoing with the town of Grafton. I think that, um, you know, and I, if I can look at the village board here, I think we all support the amount of money that we funded for that per the vote. And, uh, you know, I think that's what we would like to see enacted vote, so it's a working process and we're continuing to work on it. So just a general idea here, I think I hear consensus that we're good with moving forward with the budget as it is. With some answers to question, Lisa. Yes, I heard, yes, we're pretty good.
Um, yes, but certainly we're not ready to vote at this point, but yes.
Yeah, but Andy?
Yes.
Um, Andy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So I think, um, that's a good step. Um, and, um, I will look for a motion to adjourn unless there's any other questions here.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, we are in. For about nine minutes.